All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Goodell, you call the roll.
Sure. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
If you all rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's contained a motion for adoption of the agenda for the evening. Ms. Reitinger, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. All right, so first on the agenda for tonight is our spotlight. Turn on Dr. Miller. Okay, great. Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. As you look at the agenda item, I will, I'll help you out with the pronunciation of what it is that we will be talking about or sharing. It's one of those things, if you look at it over and over, it's Arduino. And some of you might be familiar with Arduino boards and the like. So tonight, we'd like to share with you some of the things that have been happening with our Henderson Huskies and their Arduinos around appreciation of music. So, John, take it.
For this project, it's a music scenery unit. So the kids listen to different types of music, and they figure out what composers have to do to really make an audience hear what they want to hear. The kids kind of come up with a story of what they want to tell during their composition. They use GarageBand to create a musical scene, so that if someone listens to their music, they should hypothetically know what the story is. Steve Eric came up with the idea, he has the Arduinos upstairs, and he came up with the idea of using the compositions to add light to and kind of make the music even come alive even more. So it was kind of just a cool moment of collaboration between the two classes.
Our 7th grade students learned how to use Arduinos. We really focus on a lot of computer science and also arts. Ms. Carpel's music appreciation class made soundscapes and shared it with us, and now our students will take Arduinos and set up LED lights to blink to the music that Ms. Carpel's class made. When the students work with music, they really get into what they're doing, because they have a personal relationship sometimes with the songs. And it was kind of enjoyable just to have a class with some music going, and you could be a little more talkative and a little more interaction between students. The takeaway for the kids is that they get to see something that they made in physical form, start to move, start to light up, and it's a lot more exciting than just being able to program something on a computer screen.
It really helps with problem-solving skills and helping me, like, work individually and seeing if I can overcome a problem by myself without having to ask other people. And if I can't, I still have other people who know how to do it, and I can get them to help.
You build them yourself and program them yourself, and you get to see the final product come all together, and it's like magic. The music always enhances a product, because you get more auditory feedback than if someone is just sitting there and you're just watching a light show.
Working with the Arduinos and with the lights gives them an opportunity to share with each other, to hash out different ideas, to share their personal interests in music as well.
So that's just a little snippet of some really cool first collaboration, I think, between the music teacher and our STEM teacher, STEAM teacher. And it's a really great opportunity to see how those two worlds can collide sometimes. So in there, you saw not only the music piece and the lighting piece, but you saw some coding, and you saw some other skills that really support critical thinking and problem-solving as well. So we're really proud of our folks at Henderson, and we wanted to highlight that for you tonight. So, thank you, John, for putting that together. Thank you very much. Our next is public comment. In accordance with School Board Bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members. And for the record, deposition and deposition requests. We have right now one request, and Ms. Valerie Budney?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Valerie Budney, and I have a son that is an 8th grader at MEH. As I stand before you tonight, I represent the concerns of 21 families now. So it's grown. I think the last time I saw you, it was around 15. I spoke during public comment last month requesting American Sign Language to be offered as a world language in the 2018-19 school year to increase access to our students in achieving an advanced studies high school diploma. The advanced studies diploma requires two years of two different languages or three years of one language. Tonight, I'm here to give you some statistics that I did not have in January, that these statistics are from the Director of Counseling at George Mason. What percent of George Mason High School graduates with a disability earn an advanced degree? Do you think it's 60%, 40%, 25%, or 15%? The answer is C, 15%. So are you surprised it's 15%? I was. I thought it was low, but 15% is lower than I expected. In the class of 2017, there were 199 total graduates. Out of those, 199, 140 earned advanced high school diplomas. 22 of the 140, or 15.7%, had a disability. 84.3% did not, 84.3%. In the class of 2016, there were 186 graduates, 144 earned advanced diplomas. 21 of the 144, or 14.6%, had a disability. 123, or 25.4, did not. So overall, approximately 85% of the students with a disability did not earn an advanced high school diploma. So Falls Church City can do better. We can have a more inclusive school system that allows children with a disability to earn an advanced degree. At FCCPS, we are seeing an increased population of children with dyslexia and autism, an increased number of children with IEPs. Having students with specific learning needs means that we need a school system that's going to provide a curriculum to allow access to an advanced high school degree. I truly believe that American Sign Language can significantly reduce the barrier to earning foreign language credit towards an advanced studies high school diploma. ASL could coincide with FCCPS' vision and mission statement of supporting the unique needs of each child. It'll also promote the vision and mission statement of an inclusive learning environment, because general ed and special ed students can take classes together. Fairfax County and Arlington schools are offering ASL as a world language at their high schools. Virginia public colleges and universities accept ASL as a foreign language entrance requirement. 200 other universities accept ASL as a foreign language. ASL is the third most popular world language taught in college. So in conclusion, providing all FCCPS high school students with or without a learning disability the opportunity to enroll in ASL courses as a world language will enable more students to achieve an advanced studies diploma. Thank you.
Thank you.
And in the letter, I just, in the fourth paragraph, I included the statistic that I mentioned, and I added more names of the families that are supporting ASL. So that's the only major change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also just wanted to let you know that this is something that we're definitely gonna be working on. Timing-wise, with the schedule, it's kind of already being worked on for the upcoming year. Would not necessarily be for this year, but definitely looking at it for the 19, 20 school year. So we're definitely here, and the staff is definitely gonna be working on that for it, for the families who are a little bit interested, okay? Thank you very much. Are there any other public comment? If not, we will move on to closed session. If someone would read us into close?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under Section 2.23711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignations. And student matters under Section 2.23711A2, in particular, request for tuition waiver under Policy 9.21, interrupted residence.
Ms. Reitinger, is there a second?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Close the committee, and is it open?
Should we reconvene in open session?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And if someone would certify the closed meeting?
Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-377B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Is there a second? Second. Ms. Reitinger? Ms. Gill?
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Hi.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is the School Board Appreciation. I hope that when you got off the lift this evening, you saw the big sign that was there waiting for you, wishing you a happy School Board Appreciation Month. For those of you that don't know, February is School Board Appreciation Month. I have a couple of things at your places that you'll find. You've got some notes from Jesse Thackeray, you've got some notes from Mount Daniel, we've got a board with some signatures from George Mason High School from the staff. We brought you a book and some candy, and we thank you very much for that. And I'd like to take just a second before we show you what TJ has put together, have the opportunity just to share a certificate that comes from the Virginia School Boards Association, and I'll go ahead and read what it says. It says, "A certificate of recognition in appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Appreciation Month, February 2018," and that's signed by Scott Albrecht and by Gina Patterson. So I have a certificate for each of you on behalf of the VSB, congratulating you, and I'll give those to you, I'll pass them down, actually. This one is for Greg Anderson. Greg, congratulations. Here's one for Erin Gill, Shannon Litten, Sean Russell, Bill Reitinger, and Lawrence Webb. So congratulations to all of you for your outstanding service to our community. I think you're appreciated by a lot of people, at least all the adults that are here in this room. And now we've got a little message from you, from some of our littler folks in the system.
What does the school board member do?
What?
Um, he, um... They deal with the textbooks, teachers, how many kids are gonna be in each classroom, how the desks, no, probably not how the desks are arranged.
They help with, like, projects, like Give Day and, I guess, Jump Up for Her and stuff.
Uh, I don't know.
They use the money and buy stuff, like, supplies.
Basically, help the school with, like, working out, like, what, when things are happening at the school and, like, that kind of thing.
How do you think our school board members impact your experience here at TJ?
Uh, help me learn more and help me get better grades.
Help us learn more, better.
They have to figure out how many kids are gonna do band, the instruments, how many kids are doing choir, the concerts.
They have really good teachers here, and I'm really happy here. And me and my brother just had a great experience.
They choose teachers that are helpful to the certain kind of fit that we have here, like, the certain kind of thing that we have.
I'm learning here at TJ, where I'm having a blast, and I have a lot of friends, and I love my teachers, and I love the principals here, and I love TJ.
Thank you, Falls Church City School Board.
Thank you, Falls Church City School Board.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Falls Church City School Board.
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 Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
We love TJ. We love us, UCFAS.
Thank you, School Board.
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 You guys rock.
Muchas gracias al consejo escolar por todo su trabajo.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Muchas gracias, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you, School Board.
Thank you for your service.
Corners of the universe in Falls Church City. So thank you for your support. Thank you all very much. That was such a lot of fun, man. See, I guess we're not the only ones who sometimes struggle to figure out what it is that we have to do sometime. I wanted to interrupt and say, no, 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 that's the super tennis job. They're the governance people. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and I will ask you to consent for the items that are listed there, that we approve those, and without objections, in order. All right, so we're gonna move on to business actions. And the first item will be the review of the draft RFP. Thank you very much. I am very excited to be able to talk about this tonight. I'm gonna invite Bob Jones, who has been with us from Arcatus, that's been instrumental in helping us pull together the RFP, the process that we will use to develop the conceptual phase in our next work here with the George Mason Campus Project. I want to take just a second to kind of go back, before I turn it over to Bob, to January 28th. And on January 28th, we had our first Sunday Town Hall meeting to update the community at the community center around the campus project and also the 10-acre site. And while we were there, my responsibility really was to talk about where we were from the perspective of the big picture, right? Where we started from working through the bond referendum to final completion of the building. And through this first part of the process, we've been, I think, very successful in gaining community input, gaining the input from our teachers around a number of things and a number of items leading up to the first conceptual RFP. But once that was let, we had a pretty significant meeting that asked for community input around some very specific items. And I want to talk about just a few of those real quick, because I think that they're important, because they are reflected in some way in the revised RFP for the design phase. And some of the design input responses that we received during our outreach were specific to the performing arts. There were a number of concerns that were raised specifically around the program and the size of spaces. So the program has been modified for the design-phased RFP to be more reflective of what our performing arts teachers are looking for. So for example, in the original RFP, we had a square stage in the Performing Arts Center, and we heard loudly clearly, not only from the teachers but from the community, "That's a bad design. We really need to bid this as a rectangular stage. We need this much space off to the left wing, and this much stage off to the right wing, this much space behind. Here's how big these rooms need to be that are attached to it, dressing rooms and the like." We also got some feedback and input about the auditorium size. We received some other information about the presidium, which is the height of the stage, and made some modifications to that and some other things associated with Performing Arts Center. We also heard from our folks in the athletics department, talking about, again, program kinds of issues. How big do the offices need to be, or how small can they be? Whose office should be bigger, and how's it gonna be used? And so those modifications were also made from the conceptual RFP now to the design-phased RFP. We've talked over parking and transportation, which was another issue that came up, looking at how do we maximize the space that we have to look at parking and look at transportation, knowing that we really are, in many ways, sort of being a game changer, you know? And I said to the crew on January 28th, "This is not your parents' high school. This is really gonna be very different in look and feel from what we all experienced in our high school days." And as a consequence of that, I think in some aspects of the building itself physically and flow and transportation and the like, we're gonna have to start thinking a little bit differently about how we maneuver in the city. We talked about green space, how much green space and tree canopy should there be? And so we've made some statements in the RFP that are reflective specifically around sustainable landscape and maximizing the tree canopy as much as possible to make sure that we meet the desired needs. One of the things we heard was, you know, with the baseball fields right up against, and softball field right up against 66 and some of the particulate matter, are there ways to look at tree buffers? And we certainly are talking about that as part of our tree canopy solution as well. And that was a really good piece of input from our community. We heard a lot about preserving legacy memorials, plaques, and the like. And I've made a commitment to the community that we absolutely will honor the past by developing some sort of legacy garden or memorial garden or wall or ore. And I think that's where some of the creativity around the design can happen, and we're really excited about that. But those plaques and memorials that are there will be co-located at the new site to really celebrate the past and also look forward to the future, and sort of look at it through a different way. We talked a lot about community use and looking at the design of the building that would allow for really easy community use in the building through, and it's not a control issue for us, it's just the language, sort of through controlled access, right? So through the front of the building, there'd be certain public spaces that would be in the front of the building, and then a lot of the academic wing would be in a different place. But the idea of really looking at how do we create a space that's community-friendly and allows people to come in, not only in space, but also through our process of getting there. And then we had a lot of conversation about net zero and sustainability. We heard a lot from the community about that, and we are committed to, you know, looking at lead gold. We're looking at other sustainability. We're looking at trying to get to net zero ready. I'm excited to engage in conversations about how we can go beyond net zero-ready, looking at photovoltaic devices on roofs and things like that, if it's within the swath of ability for our developers and the like to be able to do within the bounds and confines of what we have from a resource perspective as well. So I want to just say that this RFP design phase is not without significant modification and not without a lot of input from the community. You all have shared with me what you're hearing from the community. I really appreciate you getting out and talking with people as well. And so now we're at a place where we are about to let the design-phased RFP on the 22nd. You'll vote on this on the 20th. And on the 20th, we will also identify the three firms that have been identified as the top three that we would like to move forward with, and you'll approve those as part of the process. And we're really excited about that. There's one distinction I want to make sure that I am clear about here at the table and for the public as well. While this is called the design-phase portion of the RFP in our PPEA process, this doesn't mean that the design that we get from these design-build firms is the design that we're gonna go with. They're conceptually developing out what their ideas were in that first conceptual phase. So when we select down to the finalist in the May-June timeframe, then it's full game on. Then we take their conceptual drawings and their ideas, and we invite the community in, we invite the staff in, we have lots of opportunity to engage around, okay, here's the conceptual idea, how do we make this our own? What modifications, what changes, and the like should we be looking at within the context of what's available to us in space and in human resources and in financial resources? So I think it's important to really be clear that just because it's called the design phase of the RFP, it doesn't mean we're getting the design. It means we're getting conceptual design that we will continue to tweak and modify and adapt throughout. So once we down-select on the 20th, and this RFP hits the street on the 22nd, we will go forward with the RFP for a significant amount of time. We have an opportunity to meet with the developers, the design and developers throughout the process, in confidential meetings to help guide their thinking around what it is that we have in the RFP. We can't tell them things like, "Nope, you got that wrong, do this or do that." But we can help them better understand sort of what the thinking of the community is, and then they will bring us their conceptual pieces as well. So with that as a backdrop, I just wanted to update you and the community about where we are and provide some context, but also to say to you, you know, there's a swath of eight or 10 things we really took into account from the first-phased RFP and the second-phased RFP. And one last piece, just for the good of the order, is that when we, I don't know if I should publicly say this or not, but I'll just say it. But when we looked at all of the RFPs, and I think people looked at them online, there were a lot of pieces in those RFPs that were redacted, but those of us that were on the down-select committee were able to take those and look at them. And there were some great ideas in all five of those designs. And so we really tried to, as best we could, harvest some of those really good ideas from all of the companies, so that when we do put the final together, we can, and as we have, put the final together, it's reflective of the best thinking of all of the companies that were responsive to our bid. So I want to just make sure you knew that as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob Jones. I probably just said everything he was gonna say. But turn it over to Bob Jones just to talk about some of the things in the RFP.
All right. So do you have the RFP in front of you? I think just to hit some key points, if you go down to page 2, 1.2.
You don't have it. I'm sorry.
Can we? It's on there. It is on there.
Sorry, Bob. I want to make sure, we'll get it up on the screen too, so people can see it. Go ahead.
All right. So this section basically tells them that, you know, these are the requirements that you need to meet, and it also sets their construction cost limit at $108 million. So the idea is that, you know, we've told them what the upper limit of the cost is going to be, and then based on our requirements, we want them to compete with each other to give us the, you know, the most scope for that budget. Now, there's nothing that says it can't come underneath of that, but, you know, they'll all be competing to see how much of our scope that they will, you know, that they're willing to provide for that amount. I think, next, go down to page 5, 1.15. So this process, the end dates that we have are substantial completion of the high school on June 1st, 2021. So that means that the high school will be ready for occupancy and use on that date. The final completion of the project is currently scheduled for November 1st, 2021. And why that's a little further is that once the high school is ready to move in, we have a time period of a month for the school to move out of the existing high school and get everything into the new high school and set up before they start the demolition. So in that time, they'll be doing the demolition, and then also there's gonna be some of the site work that they need to do after the demolition's complete, and also, you know, providing the economic development site in a, you know, state. in a, you know, stabilized and cleared condition. So basically, you know, it'll be ready for the economic development part starting on November 1st of 2021. Another key element that we looked at is just section three on page seven. So this also, this is where we talked about, we're going to have may have confidential meetings with each of the proposers separately. And this is more of a, it allows for an exchange of information, and we can tell them if we see something that we don't think meets the contract requirements. We can't, we can't guide their design or guide their proposal, but it's more of an information exchange. And this is found to be very useful to having three solid proposals at the end of this And then if we go down to section nine, on page 11, mostly 12. So this is the evaluation criteria and how we're going to judge the proposals when we receive those. There'll be 9.2 characteristics. A lot of this part is the narratives, you know, and understanding of the project. They'll submit their schedule. So they they can submit a schedule that ends earlier than our completion date, just not later than our June 1 completion date. Operation of the project is basically the management of the project, their understanding of our technology. And one of the items that we have in here that I was going to do later, but with technology is we're very specific about all the different parts and pieces that we want, from the make and model of the servers to the wireless access points, the switches, everything to do with technology so that they understand what they're providing. But since we know technology changes very rapidly, and we're not going to be putting this into the building for another two and a half years, what we're having them do is put that technology piece into an allowance so that that money is set into an allowance. So when we're getting closer to the time we can open, if some of that technology changes and we need to order different pieces, then the money's set aside to be able to do that. So we're not locked into today's technology two and a half years from now. And then 9.4 is other factors. This is where their cost proposal comes in, the their proposed design solution, their plan for continued school operations, which will be their safety plan, and how they plan on keeping everything on the site up and running and ensuring the the safety of the staff and students while the construction's going on. And then finally, the assumptions and exceptions that they have that their proposal is based on. And jump in if there's any questions as we as we go through. I'm just hitting some of the items. If you go to attachment one, which is page 16. So the this is just one more down. So this is how the the cost breakdown that they'll provide us. So in this, there's the reimbursable cost, which is the actual cost to construct the project. And we'll get that broken down into site work, construction, demolition. And then there's the the fixed costs. So this includes the design fee and then the the private entity's fee for doing the project, which are considered fixed. So as we go through, this being open book, and we, you know, monitor all the costs as it goes, the reimbursable cost is what we're mostly monitoring. And if this comes in less than what they had originally proposed, that's where we calculate what the shared savings will be at the end.
Can you describe the split in savings, because everybody's aware?
Right. So the split of the savings will be 75% for the schools and 25% for the private entity. And this provides a real good incentive for them to work with us and help us reduce costs as this project goes along and to control costs because they have a stake in, you know, how much money is left over when we're all all done.
I wanted to just sort of stop for a second and linger because there've been a lot of questions from the community about, you know, what's the backstop going to be on this? How do we know you're really not going to go over your budget? How do we how do we know that this isn't going to cost 25% more? And and the backstop in this for us really is, one, the GMP, which is the greatest maximum price that's negotiated upfront for what our program is. And the other is that we have real incentive, as as Mr. Jones has indicated, to to really do the right thing by this school to get the very best product we can. But if there are ways to accelerate the the process or to look at materials that are equivalent materials, but through some efficiencies, be able to find some savings, we'll we'll be looking at that as well, too. So we're all trying to trying to make this work because there's incentive for both parties to make it happen.
And I think the next would be attachment eight, which is page, page 24. So right now, these are the ad alternates that we're looking at. And, you know, so when we get their proposals in, they'll give a cost to see. So if we have the budget to add these in, we can. The first one is an expansion of the auditorium to the 750 fixed seats. Ad alternate two is the multi-use field, the lighting scoreboard and bleachers. And then ad alternate three would be the tennis court lighting. I believe I believe we have two more that we were going to add. The idea came up that when they have to, when it comes time to replace the HVAC at MEH, that, you know, if we could go ahead now and put in the required well field while we're doing the well field for the the high school, that and have that all in place. And then when it comes time to replace the HVAC at MEH, we can go straight to geothermal and have that capacity. So that would, you know, we can have an ad alternate for that item. And then the, I think the the second one could be for some power generation to reach net zero. So currently, the school will be designed and be net zero ready, but actually have, see if we can work in and have the budget to do some of that power generation to start the road down to net zero.
We got a sense from some of the the RFPs that there might be some folks out there that have the same interest.
If we go down to the scope of work, which is PDF page 30, it's page one there. All right. So most of the scope of work is identical to when the conceptual phase went out. So I'll just highlight any changes. The first change is on the next page. All the changes are in yellow. So this was just a clarification to go to the learning pod idea. It was originally set up for more of the departments, and we wanted to go back and have more of the learning pod idea. So this was just a clarification there. Go down three, four pages, down to page six of the scope, right there. So on site circulation, this is where we talked about, one, since they don't have control over the economic development site, we assured them that the the access drive from Haycock that goes along the Virginia Tech site will remain so that they have an access into the, you know, they can count on that as an access into the high school part of the site. And then, as we talked about with the the nature areas and the sustainable landscaping, we ended the language at the end. The preference will be given to designs that include nature air, nature areas and green spaces not utilized for sports facilities that provide students and staff access to nature. Proposers are encouraged to provide sustainable landscaping designs that integrate student learning opportunities and informal uses with opportunities for outdoor classrooms. FCCPS strives to provide the maximum tree canopy in the areas outside sports facilities with a goal of 15% canopy cover. And then go down to the bottom. These, the next two were just clarifications that we're working on with the city. So the stormwater management, we just clarified that at this point, they're only providing stormwater management for the high school site and not the economic development site. And then the next piece is just making them clear that the you're going to need a sewage pump station because the high school site is lower and can't be gravity fed to a sewer. And the the current location of that manhole is on the economic development site. So this basically explains to them that they're allowed to come onto that site with their force main to feed to the the sewer manhole. That was it for scope. There were no changes to the high school program. And I think the only
I thought there were some in the arts that we made.
There weren't any square foot changes.
Square footage changes, just design.
And the edge spec, I think those start on page 97 of the PDF.
We won't go through them.
Okay. Yeah, they're they're everything you said about the the stage and and so forth. are there any questions?
So so let me let me just chime in real quick to first say thanks to, before there are any questions, to Mr. Jones, but also to Tricia Minson and to Kristin Michael and Sevi Padilla. And we also had outside counsel here for several hours, moving through this to really get it to a great place. The other piece of this that I think is important to note is that there will also be an addendum that will be given in addition to this RFP within probably a week. We're hoping to get it to you by next week so you can see it and adopt it along with the RFP, but we want to make sure it's exactly perfect. And the reason that we want to have that contract in the RFP, or at least as an addendum to the RFP, so that when these bidders or these design build companies are looking at it, they can tell us, you know, what can they live with and what can't they live with in within that contract that we are putting out there. So we've been working diligently to make sure that we write the best contract that positions us well for this project. So any additional comments, Tricia or Kristin? Questions for Bob?
Questions from any board member?
There's several. I need to spend a little bit of time reading this. And I'm not sure either of these are for you, Bob, but one is the, you talked a little bit, Dr. Noonan, about the one-on-one meetings in the RFP. That just seems, I no, I don't know much about contract or contract discussions, but all the RFPs I've done, you know, you submit written questions and then everybody gets a response to the written questions for a level playing field. So, you know, I defer if outside counsel says that's the way to go. I'm just, I want to be very sure that we, if we if, you know, statements or clarifications are made in those meetings, that they're made available to everyone, even if it's a one-on-one meeting. So it seems appropriate to me to do, you know, this this violates the contract, this doesn't meet the spec. But if there's a clarification, if there's an ambiguity, we need to make sure that it's a level playing field for all the participants in my
Yes, that's one stipulation of those meetings is that, one, you cannot change any of the contract requirements. And if you do, all proposers get the same change. So it's, if anything comes up that needs clarifying or changing in the requirements, then all parties get that.
I think it's equal with the communications, too, and the clarifications. I think that, you know, we we one would, we would open it up to everyone, and I think all of the those that are interested would certainly want to participate in those conversations. But I hear your point.
The other quick question I had is on 9.4.3, the Continued School Operations Plan. So I I have a rough sense of what that is, but does that include construction staging? Because what I what I, you know, what I want to get a sense of is whether or not we're going to expect as a part of the responses to the RFP, what the staging plan will be, where equipment will be stored, where the facilities will be out of use, those sorts of things. And we'll be able to actually take that into account. You know, like, for example, if, you know, if proposer A says, we're going to put all our stuff on the football field and it's going to be there for two years, that's one thing. But, you know, we're using the mulch field and it's going to be there for two months would be, that'd be a differentiating factor, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of the effect on the existing school.
Well, let Bob
Yeah, I would expect the the safety plan to show, you know, where the construction fencing is going to be, where their staging areas are going to be, show how access, how their access, their construction access into the site will be, and how they're going to maintain, you know, the parking, the buses, how all the site circulation and student circulation on site will be maintained during construction. And that should be, that'll be part of the proposal.
But yes, so so those will be factors that will come in to play. We have a pre-proposal meeting scheduled for March 8. And I would presume that some of the questions will be, you know, using your example, some of the questions will be, where's the laydown area going to be? Is there going to be other spots for us to be able to to do these things? And so some of it will be done through clarification, and hopefully the companies will be diligent enough to ask the right questions to be able to respond appropriately.
I'm really only concerned about two things. One, that we're clear that that's a factor in evaluation. And two, that, you know, really, it's not just about where you're going to be, but how long you're going to be. So that's it for me.
Any other questions? I look forward to actually next week getting the full, you know, of the the bidders who are going to be out there. From getting five, I think we're at a good good spot of having and knowing that there is interest in the project from the development, the school development community so that we are going to be in a position, I think, you know, some good good starting point and knowing this is just a beginning point as the project is moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Jones, and look forward to it next week.
Just the last comment for the good of the cause and to make sure that you all are aware, we are going to, this is going to be, is posted on Board Docs, it's in public. So anyone who would like to see it may. I'll also be sending a direct copy to the city manager on behalf of the superintendent so he can fan it out to the council members as well.
Thank you very much. This will be 8.02, reading adoption of policies. Ms. Minson?
Good evening. We have four policies, technically five, because one policy is filed both under staff and under students. They were the ones that were presented for first reading at the meeting in January. And while we presented eight for first reading, then we're only bringing four back since it's been a very busy month. I appreciate your patience with me on that. The first policy for review is GCBA, Staff Salary Schedules. This replaces former FCCPS policy 8.22. And with this policy and with the other three that I'm bringing tonight for your approval, there were no changes from the discussion in the January meeting. There were no additions or any other changes. Are there questions about this policy?
If we can edit it down, it's kind of verbose.
That's a very good point. I'll see if we can maybe abbreviate some of the words or hearing none, going on to the next one. This is the joint policy, so whoever's lucky enough to read in the motion here would have to read both GBEF and JHCL, but the content of the policies are the same, and there are no changes from the January meeting. No questions? Policy GBL on Personnel Records replaces former policy 8.8. Again, no changes from this from what was presented in January. And last, certainly not least, is militarily even benefits. New policy is GCBEB, replacing our previous policy 8.88.
Any questions? Any board member? Any board member?
And just, Mr. Anderson? Just as clarification, Ms. Minson, there is one change that you've made in this one, just, I want to make sure to highlight that in the-
He or she?
Yeah.
Yes, that was a point you brought up, actually. I'm sorry.
78, thank you for that change.
And thank you for bringing it up in January. You're right, that is the one change that the board requested that made sense and was added in.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Ms. Minson.
You're welcome.
I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policy GBEF-JHCL, lactation support, GBL, personnel records, GCBA, staff salary schedules, GCBEB, military leave-in benefits, and JHCL-GBEF, lactation support.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second? Thank you, Ms. Russell.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. Next will be the FY '19 budget update, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Noonan and Ms. Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Webb. We appreciate you turning it over to us. I, in just a second, am going to turn it over to Ms. Michael and want to thank her publicly along with Michelle Kopic for their incredible work continuing to pull together the city of Falls Church schools' budget for this year. I want to take just a second to thank all of you as well. You all, for the last several weeks, have been out pounding the pavement, talking to your constituents about the budget, having opportunities to talk with them about what their values are with respect to the school system, and we really appreciate that. Tonight, what you'll have before you is a little bit of information, sort of backing up, but also sort of what to anticipate going forward. I think we have some really good information in here about some of the things that are in the budget and our approach to that work, followed up with some other information around, about surrounding jurisdictions, and then we'll end it with some budget questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Michael. Thank you for your presentation this evening.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to share information with you at the regular meeting tonight in advance of next week's budget work session. So going to slide two.
I think you got to scroll.
Thank you. Slide two has the agenda for the information that I'm going to briefly go through tonight. So first, I'm going to review the upcoming budget activities and the approach that we used in developing the proposed budget. Then I'll share some additional compensation information from surrounding jurisdictions, as well as proposed budget increases that we know based on what's been presented to date. Then I'm going to just briefly review the process for budget questions and the calendar. And then once I finish the slide deck, I'll go through all of the budget question responses that have been completed since our last work session on January 16. So when we look at our upcoming budget activities, I know the school board is very well of this process, but I thought it might be helpful for the community that's following along, watching these presentations online. So after tonight's meeting, next Tuesday, we will have a public hearing and a budget work session, and at that meeting, the school board votes to send the budgets to the city general government for their funding consideration. Then in March, the city manager is going to present the proposed budget for the general government. Following that, we'll have two joint meetings with the community. The first is scheduled for March 18, and the second is scheduled in April. And then also, just as a reminder, in March, we'll see the state budget finalized. Today was actually crossover for the state, which means that bills that were passed in one chamber go to the other chamber. And then on general, the general assembly is set to adjourn on March 10. So when we look at what's coming up in April, our second community meeting will be held in April. And then in April, the city council is scheduled to approve their operating budget, which will include the transfer to FCCPS. That'll be April 23. So at that point, we'll know the funding that we're going to receive, both from the state and from the general government. So at that point, we will hold public hearings, continue our conversation on the budget, and the final budget will be adopted on May 8. So just looking at what our proposed budget approach was, again, just as a reminder for the community, when we look at that proposed budget approach, FY '19 budget was developed with fiscal constraint, really recognizing the investment that the community has made in funding our new high school. But this budget also truly reflects the priorities of the school system. It reflects our needs, and it's also aligned with the triennial plan. So when we look at this budget, we're requesting an increase from the general government of 2.9%, and that will not require a tax rate increase. And that funding is really imperative for us to provide our employees with a 3% salary increase, and it really funds about a third of the requests that we receive from staff and principals. So when we look at the centerpiece of our budget approach, the single largest increase on our FY '19 request is to provide a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for all of our employees. Our employees are our number-one resource, and providing a fair and competitive wage is essential. When we look at that 3% COLA, it's consistent with what we anticipate the city manager is going to be recommending for general government employees, and providing a cost of living is going to benefit all of our employees, right? As I know you remember, a step increase does not benefit employees that are at the top of the salary scale, so our employees that have been with us for the longest amount of time. So this next slide, which is slide seven, what we've done is we've went out and gathered information from the surrounding school districts, because we wanted to share with you what other districts are proposing for their employees. So when we look at this chart, Arlington County, who's our nearest competitor, they'll be releasing their budget in February, in February 22. And we'll talk more about Arlington in just a minute. Next is Alexandria City. They proposed a step increase, and that step increase has an average impact for their employees of 2.5%. In addition, Alexandria is adding an additional step at the top of their salary scale, so people at the top will still have that ability to step. Next, we look at Fairfax County. Fairfax County is proposing a step increase for all of their employees, and that's an average impact of 2.5%. In addition to that, Fairfax is working to continue to enhance their salary scale. They're investing an additional $53 million just on their teacher scale, and that represents an additional increase of about 3%. So when you add those together on average, that's a 5.5% increase for teachers. So next, we have Loudoun County. Their budget is also released. They too are proposing a step increase for all of their employees with an average impact of 2.2%. They are also, I'm just going to focus on teachers for now, enhancing their teacher salary scale. They're investing $17.8 million, and that would provide an average impact for teachers of an additional 3.2%. So when we look at teachers there, that's a combined impact of 5.4%. Manassas City and Manassas Park, those budgets come out on February 13th and February 26th, respectively. And then lastly, we have Prince William County. They too have proposed a step increase for their employees that provides a 2.7% increase on average. And the other thing that they're doing is they proposed adjustments to their supplementary salaries, which included coaches, pay for teachers that supervise clubs, and temporary employees. So if we look a little bit more at our comparison with Arlington, if we assume that Arlington County provides their employees with a step and not a COLA, this salary chart goes through and it compares what does our budget proposal look like? So FCCPS's 18 salary scale, combined with a 3% cost-of-living adjustment, compared to what Arlington's FY '18 salary scale is, which is what it would be if they did a step and no COLA. So on this slide, slide eight, we've shown the, either the gap or how much we're above for every single step in terms of dollars. So what you'll see is in the very column to the left, you'll see the step. Then we have the salary lane, so the first is the BA lane. The dollars show the variance between FCCPS's salary scale and Arlington's. So if we look at this very first one, which is a BA first-year teacher, as you can see, a teacher at FCCPS would make $2,860 more than a teacher in Arlington. Then the blue-shaded column shows you exactly how many teachers we currently have at that step. So you can see in this case, there are four, right? And you can work through this chart looking the same way. So if we took just another example, if we looked at the master's degree lane, FCCPS's salaries again are higher at those first five steps. So you can see we compete really, really well for our entry salaries. And then when you look at that master's degree lane, once you get to step six, you can see that's when our salaries start to fall below what Arlington's are. If we look at this in terms of percentages, which is what's shown on slide nine, this is that same gap but shown in percentages. So when you look at this overall, you can see by investing in a COLA, we're really helping to close that gap with Arlington. When we take this overall and look at what that gap is for all of the steps combined, not weighting them based on where our employees are, but instead just looking at the scale as a whole, that gap is 1.3%. So our salaries are 1.3% below if we average all of these lanes and steps together. So just a reminder as well, when we look at the new initiative funding, this is a slide that was presented as part of the proposed budget presentation. The total net funding for new initiatives is $717,000. So this was the net increase. So in cases where we were making other reductions to offset a cost, the net increase is shown on this slide. So you'll see that particularly, a great example is the third line down, the special education specialist. That cost of $34,600 is the net cost after other reductions were made. So again, these, all of these initiatives support our triennial plan. So when we think about our overall budget increase, which is on slide 10, our overall budget increase is 0.8%, and that too is significantly below the surrounding jurisdictions. So if we look to the chart to the right, when we look at all of those overall increases, I mean, you can certainly see that Alexandria's increase is 4.9%, Fairfax County's is 4.3%, Loudoun County's is 8%, and Prince William is 3.9%. So when you look at that, you know, our overall increase is also lower. So how do we get there? How do we get to that overall increase being lower? So we invested in our teacher salaries. We also have those additional increases to support our triennial plan, but those cost increases were offset by savings in our benefit accounts. Staff also went through and looked at every individual current salary and adjusted all of our salary base as well, recognizing any turnover that has occurred, and we also looked at all of our other expenditure accounts. So overall, when you look at our total budget increase from our 18 revised budget to FY ' '19, that total increase is just over $400,000, which is a 0.8% increase overall. So the next slide really looks at our budget question process. Any questions that the school board may have? Just as a reminder, please submit them directly to the superintendent. We're going to continue to answer those questions. We'll post them for the public and share them. So after we finish this presentation and answer any questions, we'll go through the budget question responses that we have posted to date. Those two are posted on the web. Then the very last slide in this presentation is our budget calendar for FY '19, again, as a great reference for the community and yourselves as well.
So, thank you, Ms. Michael. I want to just sort of add in, and I think that this was clear in here, but if it wasn't, the fact that we heard from the community a couple of things. One was, hey, you know what? We just voted for a new high school for you, and we recognize that our taxes are going to go up by four cents for the high school, and we agree, and we agree that they actually should go up six cents because we believe that the library and the, and city hall should be taken care of as well. But whatever you can do to sort of keep the operational side of the house down, we'd appreciate. And so we really took a really tight approach to this, and I don't want it to be lost on the public or anyone here, that the way that we scrubbed our accounts to really align some of this work, to really take appropriate backside cuts to help support funding some of the additional costs, which I'm not sure has been done necessarily in recent years, where it's been add, add, add. We really feel like we took a fair approach to this, and we only funded one-third of the requests overall that were brought to us by our community and by our teachers, who believed that those needed to be done, those other two-thirds needed to be done to make sure that our system was whole and continuing to function. So I want to, I want to just say that upfront as we continue this conversation, because if I had my druthers and I really wasn't thinking about the importance of fiscal restraint, or I really wasn't thinking about the fact that, you know, we just got this high school, I would be proposing a 4.4% increase in the transfer, because there are some needs here that we've left off the table. So bringing 2.9%, we also brought it under three because we knew that if we got it under three, based on current revenue projections, it would not cost the community a penny on the tax rate. So we really tried to approach this with a very thoughtful perspective and approach. And anyway, I just want to make sure that you know that and that the community's clear as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, we'd be open to answering any questions you have.
Questions by any board member? Ms. Go.
So first, I just want to thank you for this budget that I think really lifts all the boats this year, that the COLA goes across all the staff. I think there's especially some pockets of staff that haven't received increases, you know, beyond our teachers. So I think it's great that we're going to lift everybody up. And then also that the positions that are proposed are also non-classroom positions, again, that are going to help every student and help every teacher. So I think the work that you all did has really been wonderful. It's been a really nice budget process. I know there's a perceived lack of school board work sessions on the budget, so I wanted to remind the community that we are doing a lot of work behind the scenes, all the individual school board meetings at the schools, in central office, the work that our central office staff is doing, meeting with community groups. I think a lot of that goes unseen by the public.
Thank you for coming out to the schools and meeting with every staff and every staff member that wanted to come. You guys have really done a ton of legwork on the backside.
Yeah, I was really impressed by the turnout at the central office meeting. That was, every member of central office was here, and we got to hear a lot of good feedback on the budget and worked through some issues with them and hear some of their concerns. I did have a question about, if we aren't able to fund the COLA, what would the impact of that be on our ability to recruit and retain teachers? I know some people say, "I work at a job and I don't get a, I don't get a cost-of-living increase every year, so why should our staff get a cost-of-living increase?" And how is, how is public education different in the need to provide that COLA each time?
Well, it's a great question, and I guess I would start with going back to the slide that shows, slide 11, that talks about the percentage of, I'm sorry, not that slide. Going back to slide seven, that does show what surrounding jurisdictions are doing. You know, we're competing regionally, and that's the bottom line. And so all we can do is the best we can do in this region. So when I look at Fairfax County, who's going to offer a 5.5% increase to their teachers this year, and I look at Loudoun County, that's going to offer a 5 and 5.4% increase to their teachers this year, and their cost of living to buy a house and to do some other things is less expensive, it's much less expensive to live in Loudoun County than it is to live in the city of Falls Church. I think it puts us at a huge disadvantage if we lose ground. So, one, I think, I think it's important from the perspective of our ability to recruit and then retention. I think if we're not growing our salary scale and people believe that they can walk away and make $10,000 more a year in another system, that's particularly problematic. Now, compensation, and this is more of a philosophical statement than anything else, compensation is multifaceted. I would like to be extremely competitive in the salary compensation realm, but I also think there are some things that we can offer to our employees that not other large systems can offer. For example, we offer smaller class size. We offer a personal touch, you know? We know our kids, we know our families. We provide really strong professional development, and that's reflected in this budget by the addition of the special ed resource teacher, for example, to provide professional learning for our staff. We've continued conversations with things like, "How do we provide care for our employees' children over the winter break when they live in Fairfax and their kids are off, but we're still in session?" So we're nimble, we're able to sort of try to figure out some of those things. So those are benefits too, but at the end of the day, money matters to our teachers. It's a tough profession, and for us to be able to compete, I think we need to at least be able to hang in there. And when we have surrounding jurisdictions that are offering more than 5%, we're at a significant disadvantage.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Russell?
I just had more of a comment. I was fortunate enough to visit three of our schools over the course of the last week or so to get the teachers' feedback with regard to the budget and just find out what they were excited about, what they appreciated, and any kind of, I guess, constructive feedback they had. And interestingly enough, for the most part, there really wasn't a lot of negatives. They were very excited about the COLA across the schools, and so they were excited about it for two reasons, I guess. Number one, because obviously the financial aspect of it and the fact that it was for everyone, but also because I think they really felt that it showed our support for the teachers and that they appreciated that as well. And then the second thing that they really appreciated is the much-needed positions that are in the budget and how those impacted the- are in the budget and how those impacted them, their abilities to do their jobs, and especially the special education positions and the ISL positions. And they were very excited that they were going to have the additional support for that and the opportunity for professional development through those positions. So, I just wanted to provide the feedback from the teachers themselves in terms of what they were thinking with regard to the budget. So, thank you, Dr. Noon, for putting that together.
I have one other question. So, and I just, this is a clarification, because I thought I heard that you say at our meeting that there's one school psychologist for over 1,500 students right now?
That's correct.
So, this, so adding this will help decrease that disparity?
It'll cut their teacher load, yeah, or the load. That 1,500 number is so far out of what is acceptable in every context. So, so, that's the first one we're going to resolve, and we have some similar issues in social work. And again, if I could have more money and have a 4.4% transfer, which is what I would ask for, I would also put a social worker in there.
And what's the, what is like the, the usual ratio there?
For a psychologist?
Or a psychologist to a number of students?
It's about half that, one to about 750, which is still, which is still a huge number, and, and the truth of it is, is our, our community is, we have a needy community for a lot of reasons. We have a lot of kids that come in and a lot of kids that go out and need some extra support.
Other questions?
Actually, I have one more comment. Sorry, I forgot about it. I just wanted to point out how much I appreciate the question and answer document that you and the central office staff have been putting together. I think it's been tremendously helpful, and I would just encourage anyone in the public who hasn't had a chance to look at it, it's constantly being updated, and I think it's now up to, what, 32 pages?
What question are we on now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, but it's 32 pages long.
Right, exactly. So, it's extremely informative, and I think that it answers a lot of questions that are being asked out in the public and provides a lot of information, so.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to echo what Ms. Russell just said. I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing in the Q and A document. I think it's addressing a lot of questions that I've been hearing out in the community. Also, wanted to say, Dr. Noon, thanks for getting the spreadsheets out for the budget tables. That's, that's helped a few folks who wanted to do a deeper dive, be able to do one kind of more efficiently, so, thanks for that. And the other piece, I've also had the opportunity to go out to a couple of the schools over the last week and hear directly from the staff. That was a real benefit for me, being able to sit down and talk directly, to hear their excitement and what they were worried about and what they were interested in with it. The one thing that also both talked about as a distinguishing factor that's important, and I think the budget allows us to keep doing that, is the, is the small class size. It's not just about the money, it's the fact that they, the teachers that we heard from were talking about their ability to give that one-on-one, hands-on experience in a way that is not possible in areas that have a larger ratio. So, I thought that was a really, a really positive statement.
So, if you, just, sorry.
No, 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 no.
No, you first, please.
No, no, really, I, yeah, I don't have a question.
I liked it the last. It's appropriate as vice chair.
Excellent. I was just going to add really more of a comment. I was at the special education meeting last night with those folks, and we had a chance to really dive in a bit more specifically on Mary Ellen Henderson and their special ed situation. And so, I got a little bit better understanding of how they're going to use those new positions if they get them, and the importance do kind of to caseload and just what they're able to offer, kind of, other schools have sort of a person who can be a resource teacher and how MEH does not have that, and how they're going to be able to shift if they do have that position. So, I just wanted to share how clearly the importance of that position came out with that group.
Ms. Reitinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple of things. I did want to clarify for people who are listening, we've, you know, we've been saying no tax increase. We're talking about no tax increase from the operational budget, as you pointed out, so. There is a tax increase coming for either reserves and for the, the underlying construction. So, what we're talking about is that the projected amount that we are talking about, asking for, we have voted on, is under the projected economic growth of the city, so that would not require an independent tax, tax increase.
Which, which Mr. Reitinger, if I may add, from Kieran Bawa and from Wyatt Shields today, it's, it's well over 3%. It's actually at 3.4% is what it's looking like.
One more comment, actually, two more, there are more comments than questions, I'm sorry. Creepy tonight. The, I raised this before, so I won't go into detail on it, but I'm very concerned that over time, we are not treating our teachers fairly enough by, you know, maybe alternating back and forth between steps and COLAs. To go to what, one of the things Ms. Gill said, you know, it's true that not everybody gets a COLA, but almost everybody gets some sort of increases they get more senior. And sometimes it's transferring to a new job in their line of specialty, and sometimes it's just a seniority increase for the amount of time they've been there, which is effectively what the federal government does. But what teachers have are steps and COLAs, and so, the, that's the way we reward them. And when we alternate like we're doing, I think that over time, we may have inequitable arrangements between similarly situated teachers. So, I'm not talking about merit pay or anything like that. I'm just saying, you have one teacher who may have swapped back and forth between two school systems, and she may have a much higher salary because she goes to, she keeps up in steps, whereas a teacher who does not, does not. So, I think, you know, I just want to make sure we get a, we're not going to do it for this year, but we, next year, think about what the right system ought to be. The last comment, and it may lead to some discussion, not so much today, but next week, is, I did, so it starts with a question, which is, in the deck that you presented, the calendar shows public hearings in May after the city council adopts its budget. What would we do a public hearing for?
So, my assumption is not having been here, but, but depending on what level of funding we're getting from the general government as well as the state, right? If it doesn't meet the request that we asked for, if you want citizen input prior to making any final budget decisions in case they need reductions or changes to the programming.
I would put it differently for me, you know? I think we need to, in the budget we approve, say, if we get guidance, this is what we're going to fund. That's what we did last year, and I'm, I'm, I will insist, I may not have the votes for it, but I will as a person insist that we do that again this year, because I think we've got to tell the city council, if you give us 2%, given you, our costs, it's very different than the city, right? The city has a lot of initiatives that are not people-driven, you know? 85% plus of our budget is people-driven, so we can say, we have fewer teachers, we pay them less, and everything else is essentially rounding error. So, we've got to make big decisions about if we get 2% instead of 2.9, that's roughly $360,000 less. And so, I was looking at the, the new initiatives budget, because again, you know, just speaking for me, I consider the 3% COLA untouchable. We have to be competitive, so we're going to have to find other ways if we only get 2% to find $360,000. And that really takes away all of the non-special ed people, because the special ed additions are compliance required, and we need those positions. So, you'd be talking about cutting a mass specialist, a PYP coordinator, the counselors, and some administrative support for JTP perhaps. I mean, there's, it's, it's actually, you know, it's cutting off an arm to get that $360,000. These are not, you know, little things, and it's not, it's not to put a false gun to anybody's head, but, you know, we know now what those requirements are going to be, and so, we ought to just make that decision. So, the city council is informed what happens and what doesn't happen if we get the fund. Now, if we get 2.5%, then there's a conversation to be had, and if the state revenue drops and we don't get it, and even though we get 2.9%, we have a conversation to be had. But I actually don't, you know, I, I want us, if at all possible, to be done when the city passes its budget, because we've said, here is what's important, we weighed them, and I think it, I think it's, it helps the people of the community make a more effective decision about what they want to tell their elected representatives, both us and the city council, and it helps the city council make a more effective decision, because otherwise, people are going to go into and saying, well, you know, they'll cut 20,000 from this fund and 10,000 from that fund, and we salami sliced our way to death in the past, and it's ridiculous. It's a level of scrutiny the city never applies to any of its programs, and I've seen that. And really, to be frank, they shouldn't, and we shouldn't either. You should tell us what's necessary for the program, and we decide, you know, where the big chunks are. So, I'll get off my soapbox now and stop, but I'm pretty committed to that view, so that's where I am.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If not, for me, again, thank you all very much for what you've done. I think the budget questions, which are continuing to grow, but I think is a great way to get those questions answered and out to the public and to make sure that they are well aware that we're working hard to make sure that we put forward a budget that is, is needs-based. Picking back a little bit on with Ms. Reitinger, I agree actually that if there's a way for us to, to be able to, when we vote next week, to have a general idea of what, if we don't get the 2.9 and if we get 2.0, which they, is guidance, what that looks like. I do, I agree that last year when we did our budget, I thought it went very well because it, it did take out the going back and rehashing what we need to cut when last time that we did not get the, the full budget that we asked for. I think it put us in a position that it was very painstaking of how to, to reevaluate what's going out, and a lot of things came up into those conversations that really, I didn't think necessarily had to, but it, we just was looking, we're looking at everything there. Where last year, having that upfront, here's what we're asking for, if we don't get it, here's where we're going to make the difference up at. And knowing that upfront, I think, is good for not only the public to know what, how it's going to look, but also, again, that the, the council will know, the general government will know exactly how that will look. And I agree, because I, when seeing the May public hearing, I was, I'm like, that's something new that I had not seen before, but I understand where it came from, and ultimately, if it is something in the middle of the 2.0 and the 2.9, it probably at that point may be a discussion point to have that then, but my preference would be to, here's the guidance budget, and here's what we really have worked hard as a board, and reaching out to the community, getting their feedback, I think, works best so that we, if ultimately we get less than a 2.9 of the guidance, we already know what we're going to do, and folks already know upfront what's going to potentially be happening at that point. But I thank you all for the work that you have been doing and will continue to do up through next week and forward and be prepared for that.
Just to, just to say thanks for the questions tonight. I think that they were outstanding. Appreciate your comments as well. We certainly can start to look at where some cuts would be made. I, I'm not certain that the cuts that we would make are in the current budget requests, however. When I think about our needs in this system, what this budget reflects is what we need. And so, you know, there's going to be obviously some trade-offs, so I don't want to commit to you to bring something that shows that there are some things in this budget that we would consider cutting, because I think there might be some things outside of this budget that we might look at. I think we have to have a conversation about class size. I just think we have to have a conversation about a lot of different things. I have, I have confidence and faith that as we present our case for why we need 2.9, that, that our, our friends on the other side will come along and understand with us. You know, I, I made this comment to a team of folks that were around the table the other day, and right, wrong, or indifferent, I'll say it here, and that is, you know, the voters went out and voted for a six-cent increase. And I think what happens, in my, my opinion, and I've only been here 10 months, but I think where trust and transparency falls apart is when you don't do what you say you're going to do. And I think what, when you say you're going to raise taxes six cents, and then you come back and say, well, maybe we're not going to raise the tax a six cents, and maybe we can figure something else out at the expense of something else, I just think it erodes that trust factor in the community, and I think they, the community understands it was a six-cent tax increase, our budget, if revenues come in, don't require another cent on the tax, tax rate, and I think if we can just get to a place where we all understand that, everybody wins, and we can continue to rebuild the trust in our community. So, I just sort of throw that out there as food for thought.
Are there any other questions? We will move on to the next topic, which is the...
So, would you like me to walk through the budget questions?
Yeah, sorry. Please do.
Yeah, sorry.
I follow those.
No, that's okay. So, when we look at the budget questions, they're posted both on Board DAX for tonight, and they're also posted on the public website. The new questions for tonight begin with question number eight, so I'll just briefly try to go through each of those. So, question eight had to do with what was our fund balance over the last five years and how much have we been using? Are you driving or mine? I'll let you drive. That's definitely not my strong suit, but I'll get better.
My boy can she do a budget.
I will work on the mouse. So, we're looking, question eight on fund balance. What I've done is I've included a chart here that goes back, and it looks at what was the fund balance that was available, how much of that fund balance was used, and then what the change in fund balance was. So, when we walk through this chart, one of the things that you'll notice is our fund balance use has changed year over year over year. So, the important point that I wanted to point out as we look at where we're at currently, when you look at our current year's budget, we did end the end of fiscal year '17, last June 30th, with a fund balance of 1.3 million, but our FY18 budget included using $574,200 of that to balance the FY18 budget. When we think about FY18, we have to remember that our state aid is going to be lower than what was included in last year's adopted budget. That adopted budget from last May was built on the enrollment projections that had us increasing by 82 students, but state aid is paid to us based on our actual enrollment, so we are going to see state aid come in lower. I predict about 160,000 lower, right? So, when we look at that fund balance usage and that short state revenue, you know, in the event that we use all of that fund balance in FY18, you know, our fund balance level is going to drop to just about $730,000. And then, when we think about the FY19 budget that we've developed, it includes using fund balance of $450,000. So, when we think of this overall, I just wanted to point out, when we think of fund balance historically, that's important information, but it's also important to look at what we're projecting to spend moving forward. So, question nine had to do with what are the sources for accumulated fund balance? Typically, when we look at our budget, about 85% of our budget is for salaries and benefits. That's typically the largest source of fund balance, right? Where you have the greatest variance based on employee turnover and how tightly you budgeted that employee turnover into the next year. I also think that's an important piece of information, because as we look at the budget that was developed for FY19, they did go back in the fall and look at every single individual employee salary and make all of those adjustments, right? So, my assumption is that we've built a really tight salary file as we move into FY19, which is really good and responsible budgeting, but something that we need to keep in mind as we think about fund balance over time. So, just pointing that out. Question number 10 had to do with substitute teacher pay. This chart shows substitute teacher pay for all of the jurisdictions around us, and we are at the top in a box going across. It really looks at in the first column what's our substitute pay for paras or support staff, and then really looking at what the difference is between short-term teachers and long-term teachers. Substitute pay is definitely something that we're really going to need to continue to monitor. When you look at the sub-s shortage in the region around us as well as sub-pay, I mean, particularly when we look at other jurisdictions adjusting their substitute pay, I think this is an area we'll really need to look into over the next year as we think about our budget moving forward. And this is something that's really important that we can't lose sight of. Question number 11 had to do with technology funding included in the new initiative. This was a question that came up at our work session in January. When you look at this question, we've really tried to go through and talk about what our different options are. So, if you'll remember, our proposed budget had to do with moving from an appliance-based system. The software that was presented was called Barracuda, and really looking at our proposed budget had to do with moving to a cloud-based system, right? We had received questions from Mr. Reitinger about, what about if we stuck with an appliance-based system, wouldn't it be less expensive? And absolutely, over the long term, it would be less expensive, but this question... This is an area where when we look at our proposed budget, first off, the overall estimate that was included in the proposed budget was supposed to be the net cost, and it really was the gross cost. So we know even if we go with a cloud-based solution, that we'll see savings of $19,129 that we can recognize in the budget that you adopt before it goes to the city manager and the city council for their approval. But we also may wish to talk more about at the next work session or in the future, these other options in terms of do we stick with an appliance-based solution or move to the cloud, which is more expensive. So that's question 11. Question 12 had to do with our history of salary increases over time. So this looks at FCCPS's salary increases, actually going all the way back to 2009. So what we've tried to include is if we gave a step increase, if there was a COLA, and then if there were any other adjustments. So we've included notes where we've made half-steps or other adjustments, or where we were really working to enhance the teacher scale, we've included what those scale adjustments are in the notes column. Budget question number 13 had to do with the language that we used in terms of the categories of the budget. Question 13 really focuses on the two categories of instruction and improvement of instruction. So we've included guidelines for both of those categories of the budget. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about this after we get to the next question, which is question number 14, which is similar in terms of looking at the difference between professional services and maintenance services. Again, in this case, we've included guidelines for each of those categories. I'm really looking at how we budget and how we're expending in these categories. I think one of our great tasks moving forward is gonna really be to clarify that chart of accounts, right? We should be using titles that are easily understood by the community, right? And we also should have these definitions for all of our accounts. I think it'd be really helpful if we could see them as we move forward. Then particularly when you look at these two categories of professional and maintenance services, what I would say is, I think we also have inconsistent definitions in how they're being used. So when I look at the expenditures that are in these categories and we really walk through, I think in addition to having opportunities in terms of clarifying these accounts for the public, we have opportunities in terms of really cleaning up how we're using them. So some of the examples that we've included in this response is in many cases, we've got things that I really think are maintenance services and meet the definition of maintenance services, but they're being paid from a professional services account. So again, we will continue to monitor these accounts and really get this budgeting much tighter as we move forward. Question number 15 had to do with the revenue sharing agreement. Each year, of course, we always work to improve our budget process, and we certainly would be willing to explore a revenue sharing agreement, looking at, taking into account what those ratios would be. And then the other important component I think of is really looking at, we need an additional opportunity to request supplemental funding if needed for a ratio sharing agreement. So this just provides a little bit more information about other jurisdictions that have those. Question number 16 had to do with enrollment variance and the budget impact. So when we think of enrollment variance and the budget impact, typically, if your enrollment varies from what you projected, there's really very minimal budget impact. So once we establish how many teachers that we have, if your enrollment comes in either above or below, right, we typically don't adjust the teachers that we've hired after the year started. So when we think of this current year, when we were students below where we projected, right, we didn't eliminate teacher positions at that point. We talked a little bit about, we had some small classes at the kindergarten level, right, and that was part of as we move into the next year, we just anticipate that we won't have to hire an additional teacher. But just historically, looking back the year before, we were actually over by 72 students, and the same thing there. When you look at students, they don't show up in nice need packages, so it really depends on how many students you have, not only at each school, but each grade level. So typically, enrollment variances don't translate directly into significant expenditure savings.
So can I also just chime in?
Of course.
In the budget, you'll see, we only are adding one classroom teacher for FY '19, even though we're expecting enrollment to grow by 67 kids, just as an example.
Thank you. So question 17 ties very much into the conversation earlier this evening about a pay increase methodology, right? And really looking at FCCPS, like the majority of other school systems, has what's called a step and grade system. Typically, teachers are on a step based on their years of experience, and then they also have lanes based on their educational level. So this talks a little bit about that methodology. When you look at what happens, a cost-of-living adjustment, which some other districts call a market rate adjustment or a market scale adjustment, that moves the entire scale, but then teachers typically step based on their years of experience. So when you look at the surrounding school systems and think of a methodology, we really do need to ensure that our long-term plan is really making sure that not only we're competitive to teachers coming to FCCPS, but that we're competitive to the teachers that we're working to retain, right? So we need to think both about how our skills look from the outside, and then how do our current employees compare, just as you said, with people that may be coming in from other jurisdictions. So that talks about a long-term salary methodology. Question 18 was a request, could we come up with a division-wide summary for school operating expenditures at the same level of detail as revenue? And we just, on the revenue charts, we kind of summarize them by category, which I think is really helpful, looking at what's federal revenue, what's state revenue. And we didn't have that presentation methodology for expenditures. We had expenditures at the school-by-school level, but not kind of the categorical level. So you couldn't look, for example, at instructional wages across the system. So that information is now posted with the budget documents online. So that's question 18. Question 19 had to do with playground equipment, and why do we decide to use funding from daycare to replace the playgrounds at Mount Daniel and TJ? In terms of both of those playgrounds, both of those playgrounds have really gotten to the end of their life. They truly need to be replaced, and we didn't have any funding currently set aside in the operating budget. When we think of the daycare program, it's really a special revenue fund. That program generates fees to cover their costs. Our playground equipment is used substantially by students that are in the daycare program, so it really is an appropriate expenditure for daycare to pay for things that they directly use. Last summer, they had replaced the playground at Henderson, so this summer, they would replace both the playgrounds at Mount Daniel and TJ. If the funding from daycare was not used for these purposes, the funding from daycare would need to be used for some other expenditure that supports the daycare program. So we continually look at ways that we can use that funding that not only benefits the students in daycare, but benefits the students in our entire school system and the community. Question 20 had to do with the justification for the Innovation Fund and how it differs from the Falls Church Educational Foundation grants. So this budget response provided a little bit more information. It really talks about how these two methodologies are really going to complement each other. They don't compete. It's really looking at how can they together help improve our student outcomes and success? And then question number 21 had to do with professional development funding, and did we reduce the funding for the Gifted and Talented program? We didn't reduce any of the funding. What we did is we realigned the funding for Gifted and Talented and our IB program into one account code. They had been treating it that way in the past, really looking at it as a collaborative pool, and they were really going through extra steps to have it budgeted in separate locations. So the overall funding amounts didn't change, nor did the intended use. So that's all of the questions posted to date. Thank you for the opportunity to share them, and thanks, Michelle, for all of your great work, and all of the other people who helped in terms of putting these responses together.
Thank you very much. It's Michael. Any other follow-up or any questions?
I have a question about budget, but not about FY '19 budget, so I can ask that at whatever you think is an appropriate time.
No time like the present.
Dr. Dune, I would like to know what, how will we be getting updates on current year budget activities over the coming year for '18, '19, and so on, on a routine basis?
Right. Good question. And what we have traditionally done in the former districts that I've been in have done second quarter, third quarter, and last quarter updates, and so I anticipate that we would do the same here. So we'll do quarterly updates for you. The reason we don't do a first quarter is because we're just getting schools started, just getting off the ground, so we certainly could put that into practice.
Okay. And then following up on that, more frequently than that, is there the option for maybe a monthly update in Board Docs or something like that, that's just a written item as board information?
We can provide the board with whatever you'd like. I just would want to know exactly what it is that you're looking for.
Okay. Thanks.
So just my, there used to be written updates on a monthly basis, on just a one-pager on execution.
Okay.
And I think it's hard enough to detail that most people, it moved to a quarterly update at one point, although I think the policy still says, you know, that the board asked for it, it's a monthly update. I don't think we've changed that yet, Trish, but, you know, if it's useful to board members, I think just running off, you know, a one-pager on a monthly basis on where we are on current year execution versus budget is probably a relatively easy thing to do.
I think it is easy to do, if that's the will of the board. We can certainly do that.
But that's something we've done in the past, I think that's...
Sure.
Anything else?
One last thing, by the way, just about that, that I think will be helpful. Sorry, I keep wanting to go back. You know, we are hoping to update Munis, our financial system now, and in Munis 2.0, it will have dashboards that we'll be able to show you year-to-date on accounts and how much we've spent down. So that level of transparency for the community and for you, I think will really be helpful when that comes in.
Again, thanks, everyone, for that update, and we'll move on next to adoption of city's resolution on the Campus Coordinating Committee.
Just a comment, that the city council has adopted their resolution with respect to the coordinating committee, and Mr. Shields sent it over to us and asked that we take a look at it and give our support to it. And so tonight, I'm recommending that you support it, and based on some conversations that the board had, we did take into account what we heard from you and added some language to it that is part of the motion.
And if you would outline that language, just so you pressure...
I'll let Trish Minton do that, since it's Virginia code.
Sure. This is just an update, looking at the chart that was prepared, where it puts, breaks out the roles in the coordination structure of what the city council's roles are and what the school board's roles are. Certainly, the school board sets curriculum, sets the school programmatic goals, and approves school construction contracts, but Virginia Code 22.179 outlines what the requirements are of school board members, and in Section 3 of that, it does say it is the school board's sole responsibility to manage and maintain school property, including erecting, equipping, and operating school buildings, among other things. So the language proposed in the motion recognizes that the school board does do those things that are included on the chart, but also is the entity that's required under the Code of Virginia to manage and maintain school property and school buildings.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rettenger?
One quick comment on that. I don't strictly speaking think that language in the motion is necessary, although the board wanted it, because the, you know, the code is what the code is, and as you're reading through the actual resolution passed by the city council, it only talks about the Campus Coordinating Committee facilitating coordinated decisions by the governing bodies. So to me, I've done some statutory construction in my life, that doesn't reassign any authority to make decisions. So I think the resolution, at least to my mind, is well-crafted in that sense, and it seems to me, without getting ahead of the discussion we're about to have, that having a campus coordinating committee facilitating coordinated decisions is what it ought to be doing.
All right. Open the floor to questions, comments, as we, prior to us taking action. Are there any questions or comments about the resolution? Mr. Anderson?
Chair, I would just like to say, I think it's very good that we're having this discussion and taking an affirmative step to agree, to endorse this. I think this is a very wise step for us to make sure that we have that. I do like the addition of the language that's in the motion, just to make sure it's completely clear, but whether it's strictly necessary, I think is another question in my mind, but...
Anyone else with comments?
For me, as long as, I agree with that, that language, I like having the language there just to clarify, but listening to Mr. Rettenger, who has a little bit more experience in this than me, if we, if it's in his estimation, it's expressed in the light out there, that we don't have to, I'm open to that as well, just, again, I just want to make sure that we are...
Just because I'm not objecting to the language, I just, I don't think it's harmful or in any regard.
So with that, if there are any other comments, I will then entertain a motion for works upping up the resolution. So, motion?
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Chair, I move that the school board support and adopt the city council's resolution to develop a campus coordinating committee with the addition that it's the school board's responsibility, as required by Virginia Code, Section 22.1-793, to maintain, manage and maintain school property, which includes erecting, equipping, and operating school buildings.
You're much the second?
Second.
Anything else go? Follow-ups in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we'll have future agenda items, if anyone has anything they would like to put out there for a possible topic for a work session.
Just because...
Yes, sir.
The superintendent had noted, if it's the will of the board to get to more frequent updates on budget, we should probably put, as the chair suggested, as a future agenda item in a work session, talking about updating on budget and the... There ought to be a quick discussion, but...
We can do that. Anything else? Put it in order? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for a great meeting tonight. Just a couple of quick updates from me. Obviously, we've been heavily working on RFP language for the last couple of weeks, trying to get it to where it is tonight. Really excited about having gone through the down-select process and come up with three really outstanding design-build companies that we'll share with you next Tuesday, but really feel positive about the outcome and want to thank the committee that was there for their support. And on your behalf, we had Aaron Gill and Justin Castillo as part of the school board representation. On Saturday, I had a really great opportunity to meet with the Ed Foundation over at Viget, which, by the way, is a really cool place, if you've ever, if you haven't ever been there. But one of the things that we talked about right away was sort of how that sort of look and feel of the building is kind of representative of what we're hoping the look and feel of the building inside our new school is gonna look like. Very wide open, lots of spaces for collaboration, high ceilings, lots of glass, and so it was really kind of nice to be there. But we had a very robust, I think, conversation about STEM and STEAM, and what could that look like at the high school, talking about things like engaging with, just as an example, the Kennedy Center have artists in residence. Are there ways that we could bring some of the artists in residence from the Kennedy Center over to work with our kids to incorporate the arts into curriculum as we focus on some of these STEM initiatives and STEAM initiatives? Talked a little bit about how we can continue to grow a pipeline of teachers here in the City of Falls Church through University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, George Mason, JMU, Howard University, and the like. Talked a little bit about just sort of what could the future look like for us, and when we say the future, we were talking really about the next five years, so it wasn't a whole lot of down-the-road stuff. But it was a nice morning, and I want to thank Brian Williams publicly for allowing us to meet at Viget and give up that space. From there, I wandered over to the city council retreat and got to see them doing some work along with the boards and commissions that were invited, and it was really great to witness some of the good conversations that were having, that were going on there. Yesterday, had a great opportunity to sign the floor at Mary Ellen Henderson. If you haven't been over to Henderson to see the concrete slab where the floor was, it was, it's now got tons of signatures all over it, and it was a lot of fun, and a lot of people showed up, and a good time to do that. And then I'm very much looking forward to the retreat Friday with all of you next door, and look forward to continuing the conversation about governance and what does good governance look like, and how do we, how do we work together as a team? So with that, Chair, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the superintendent? Next, we'll have... Next, we'll have board and student liaison comments. And I would kind of, you can start with you.
First of all, I would like to say, thank you, school board. You know, it's, it's your appreciation week, so I'd just like to start off saying that. Also, we recently just had midterms, and Mr. Silver, he was a science teacher there, he did something that I didn't, never heard of a teacher do in Falls Church, and that is, he made his midterms optional, and students really loved it. Some students think that, or start, or at least I've been starting to hear that midterms are a grade killer, and they don't really help their grades. That's just something to be mindful of. I knew, I do know that other school districts, they do let teachers fluctuate on whether they want it optional or not. And I get that, we have that option too, as in Mr. Silver's case, but I don't think we're making that, we're making it, I guess, as available as it needs to be. Also, in regards to food, we got that new food setup in the cafeteria. Students love it. So it's like this big, I guess, case with different levels, and you can pick out chips, cookies, and stuff like that. So students really love it, and I have just nothing else to report.
Can I have my nickel back? Oh.
Are there congratulations in order?
Yeah, you want to announce it, or do you want us to announce it?
Oh, I mean, I'll announce it, I guess.
Okay.
Anyways, I'll be attending DePaul University next year, but not only that, I also got into their law school for criminal law, so it's really exciting.
Hopefully, none of us get in trouble that we'll have to call you, but now we know so much that we can call.
And not nearly as exciting, but our girls' basketball team won tonight. They won the district finals. Actually, not tonight, on Thursday. The boys lost, but are going to head to regionals, so. And then, of course, congratulations.
Ms. Gill?
Yeah, so the first thing is that, it's related to health and wellness, but the, there is a bill about making recess instructional, counts instructional time, and it passed the House. So now it's going to go to the Senate. So that is a huge deal, and that would really have a big impact here on our day. And I know a lot of parents are just absolutely thrilled by this, and all the credit goes to some moms who started putting this group together and started lobbying and getting everyone on board and got this bill drafted. So it's, it's serendipitous, because we wanted to, we wanted to do something like that, and it's already happening. So it's great. And our delegate, Simon, voted for it, of course, only three people abstained, three people voted against it. I went to the chamber meeting this morning. They had a, they went around and said, what skills do kids need to be successful in the workforce? And almost everyone said writing, that they have kids, that kids come and they can write. What was interesting to me is that not one person said, I wish kids had more STEM. They said, I wish they could communicate more, I wish they could look me in the eye when they talk to me, I wish they knew how to plan their day, show up for a meeting on time, budget their own personal budget. So I don't know if we explore a class on how to be an adult, how to have a job. So that was really interesting. And then I went to Athletic Boosters last night, where they were concerned about the jimmies, because it is impacting their concession sales, but they're very supportive of whatever floor, whatever color we want to paint the floor, and they're really excited about the new space. And they remain concerned about parking at the new school, so they wanted to reset this one.
Last night, I attended the special ed committee meeting, as I mentioned before. Just a couple of things from that. It was focused on special ed in the middle school, and I think they seem to be doing a lot of work around putting kind of more structure into the way that tiered systems of support is working. I think Valerie Hardy has a background in special ed, so it seems like they're making some really positive steps at the middle school level in special ed. They also just highlighted and wanted to say thank you for the emphasis in this budget on special populations, and how that's also a big part of the triennial plan. They feel like, for many years, they were semi-forgotten, and they feel like they're really, there was emphasis put on that this year, and they appreciate that. And then the final thing was mentioning professional development around special ed. They said they, they had raised that last year and felt like they weren't really heard, so they just wanted to raise that issue again. So professional development, not only for the special education teachers, but also for the general ed teachers. And, you know, I think, to my understanding, there's some work being done around that. But they just wanted us to continue to keep that on our radar.
There's a position in the budget specifically. Trish?
I think Peter pretty much covered it already for me, was the big foundation meeting. I think the only other thing that I wanted to add is that they're coming up with a two-year fundraising plan, so that would help drive the funds that we need and the resources. So I think that they're starting to get a little more strategic in terms of the planning and looking further out into the future, both, I guess, ongoing needs, but also new additional projects that we have on the horizon. And so I know one of the things that a lot of our discussions focused around was needs for the new high school, and how the foundation will be able to help out with that in terms of the, I guess, extra things that we're looking for.
Mr. Anderson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity last week to go to the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee meeting. It was a really dynamic discussion that we had. One item they wanted me to highlight, there are a few vacancies, and in particular, I would, I would encourage anyone who in the Henderson or George Mason family, community that has an interest, to reach out to the members of the committee. And if you're really interested, send your resume to Marty, because they're definitely looking for folks from that particular end of things. Conversation was about the effects of new criteria for identifying gifted and talented students, as well as appeals process for decisions, one way or the other. Nothing really that I want to report on that, but that was sort of the topic there. And that's it, I think, for me. Other than to say, I also had the opportunity to attend part of the city council retreat on Saturday, and it was a, was a good discussion to listen into.
Mr. Reindinger?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So one continuing level of concern or issue of concern I'd like to refer from support employees advisory committee is the issue of para hours has not gone away. I think Dr. Noonan was there for part of that discussion, and so I know it's not all that old a decision, but the, whether, there's, there's a continuing concern about the level of fairness, particularly at, I think, Mount Daniel and TJ, maybe JTP as well. But the places where paras are responsible for help getting kids off the bus, and then essentially their full day is packed together, but they've got a seven-and-a-half-hour work day. I, I think that some, some work ought to be done to go back at some point and figure out, make sure that we've assigned that properly and we're not treating apples like oranges. I, this is not quite yet a future agenda topic, but it's going to be a future agenda topic I want to talk about in the future after we're out of budget, which is, I think the time has come with all of the calendaring issues for us to really bite the bullet and figure out whether we're going to file a waiver to start school before Labor Day. And if it's prospective for us to do that, it's a little like the third rail in this community, and I appreciate that. But I think it's just, it, I, you know, maybe it's as, as my kids get ready, or now they're in high school, and to think about, you know, the continuing SOL issues is, you know, we have, and I think we're going to have repeated gaps of large snow days in the future with the way the weather patterns are working out. It's just something to at least talk about, whether we want to try to start school before Labor Day. And the last quick thing is for Nathan. Glad you're thinking about criminal law. As a former prosecutor, I will tell you, never leave it. So forget about civil stuff. When you graduate, become a prosecutor, a defense attorney if you want, and just, until you're ready to stop being a lawyer, and then go on. Be a prosecutor. It's the best job you can do.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just thinking about, you know, that one, I didn't even think, wasn't even thinking about that, but I think that is a ultimate conversation, a community conversation about potentially applying for that waiver. Surprisingly, it was a question that the students asked during the high school debate this past election cycle when we were out there. And I was actually quite surprised that that was a question that our students were thinking about and asking about. And as I told them then, it's something that we probably need to look at our, our neighbors' Fairfax, who this year, for the first, I think, northern, immediate northern, closest to us jurisdiction that, you know, plan to have the waiver to start before Labor Day, just to see how this first year went for them. But you are correct. Every time that has come up, it is a third rail in this community of looking at the potential of starting before, before Labor Day. So it is a conversation that is going to be a community-wide one if we decide to look at that. The other comment, two comments that I have. One, as I mentioned to some before, the, for the graduation this upcoming year, Lieutenant Governor Fairfax will be the graduation speaker this year. I'm a little nervous of trying to work that out, because I think Matt Hills and I both got really nervous at about the same time, and then that's when they confirmed that they'll, that he'll be able to, to attend and be the commencement speaker this year. So I'm pretty excited about that, and I hope that he'll bring a great speech that our graduating senior class will, and community will enjoy as well. And then the final comment is where Dr. Noonan and both Mr. Anderson mentioned about the retreat this weekend. As we begin working with the city council, as we move through this process with the coordinating committee, and overall with the high school and West Falls Church Economic Development Project, I hope that we get off to a, a very strong start. I know with the, I did not know about the, the retreat until Mr. Anderson mentioned it to me in a phone conversation that we had. And it, I know some of the topics were about the West Falls Church Economic Development, but also the, the campus project. And it would have been nice to have known in advance with those, the city's appointed committees, as well as being able to talk about the important part that we are responsible for, that was part of the discussion, if we were also invited to that versus kind of hearing and showing up and kind of being there. So just want to, just say that as we kind of move forward with this, I hope that, that working relationship, because both, all of us, I think, ultimately want the same goal, a successful new high school, but also a successful economic development, because they go hand-in-hand, making sure that we are successful as a community, that we all kind of get on the same page and working together and making sure everything kind of gets off to a strong start from start to finish of both projects. So I just wanted to make that, that comment about that. And with that, are there any other comments or anything before we move on to? Looks like Marty has been pretty busy with minutes. And so, let's unanimous consent to approve the minutes of November 14, 28, 30th, December 12th, January 9th, and January 16th. And without objection, so order. And there's additions and reading material of enrollment, and...
May I make a comment?
Yes, you sure can.
Two things that I forgot. I'm in the effort to do continuous improvement on the monthly membership reports. We have two different reports posted. We have a summary-level report and the detail report. I know last month, the board did not receive the detail that showed every single month for the current year compared with prior year numbers, so we posted both. So I hope you find that a helpful resource, to have that more comprehensive level of information. Then at your seats this evening, what I forgot to mention is we've provided you with updated copies of the budgets for the Food Service Fund and the Community Services Fund. On the Food Service Fund, we had an error in terms of benefits of $3,155. So we've made that correction, so the updated fund statement is there. And then on the Community Services Fund, one of the things we had originally included was increasing the rates for that program, but really assessing the ending balance. We met with the daycare advisory committee last night, and we're going to hold the daycare fees level for next year. That's what that advisory committee voted for. So that fund statement has an adjustment in terms of the tuition that we'll charge in the revenue section. And then we also had incorrectly reduced the amount of funding that comes from the general government, so that item was corrected as well. So both of those are at your places this evening. So thank you.
Thank you very much. This is Michael. Any other comments before we adjourn for the evening? We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.